Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. And in Mayor Burgess's absence, I would like to entertain a motion to determine who will be our mayor pro temp.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion then trustee.
I need a second?
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll be ready for the vote. Trustee Brewer?
Here.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
And trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We will now turn the chair and the mic over to our president pro temp.
Can you hear me? How was that? Is that fine? Can you hear me now? All right. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer? Here. Trustee Carter?
Here.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Here. Trustee Tate?
Here.
Trustee Todd?
Here.
Trustee Zupan?
Here.
All right. Item number four. May I have a motion to approve the general proceedings for the regular board meeting of August 28, 2018? May I have a motion?
I'll watch it then.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Carter, second by trustee Zupan. Any questions or comments? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
No.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the general proceedings for the regular board meeting of September 26, 2018? May I have a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion we approve those minutes with 10 revisions and I'm going to hand out a piece of paper that details the changes I'm requesting.
Is this for everybody or just?
For the board and the clerk. So you'll notice at the top of that page, the September 26th, the 10 changes I'm requesting.
Okay, so we?
So I'm making a motion that we accept the minutes with those 10 changes made.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So moved by trustee Zupan, trustee, I mean, seconded by trustee Carter. Madam clerk, please call the roll with the recommended changes for the board meeting minutes of September 26, 2018.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
No.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I don't think I heard my name.
Oh, trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the general proceedings for the regular board meeting on November 13, 2018? May I have a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem, likewise, I would make a motion that we accept the minutes for the November 13, 2018 board meeting with eight changes as recommended on that same piece of paper at the bottom half of that page. If you'd like to review them real quickly, but that's my motion.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Carter. Any other questions, comments?
Comments? Since we're making so many changes to the last two minutes, can we have a revised copy? Because normally we don't get them once they revise, so can we have a revised copy?
Yes, that's fine. All right. Madam clerk, please call the roll with the recommended changes of the regular board meeting minutes of November 13, 2018.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
No.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion, may I have a motion to approve the general proceedings for the regular board meeting on November 27, 2018? May I have a motion?
I motion we approve them with 12 changes and apologies, I don't have a piece of paper this time with the changes, so I'm going to have to read through them. On page one, under the roll call, I would add that we have trustees Todd and Zupan also present. Under staff present, it was not Chief Kowalski present, it was Chief White present. Under approval of minutes, item A, the move to approve those minutes was with two amendments. The first one was that the accounts payable amount should be $355,441.61. The second amendment should be that the comments and questions section should be the beautification committee, not the word beautiful. The next change is the fact that there's no mention about items B and C being removed from the agenda that night. On page two, under public comment, under Linda Washington's comment, it says Linda Washington spoke on the lack on notification. It should be lack of notification, so it's changing the word on to of. On page three, under village engineer, it says Mr. Jim Zarneck, I believe it should say read his report. And then under that first bullet point below, it should say trustee Todd instead of just Todd. Further down, under reports of departments on that same page, where it says finance and administration, says Ms. Judy Sutfin reported, it should say interim finance director, Ms. Judy Sutfin reported. On the following page, under economic development director, Joseph Wizewati, it should end with that will be filed with the certified minutes. Same page, under reports of trustees, standing committees and comments, on the second part of, under the first bullet point for public services committee, under trustee Brewer, read a report. The second line there, it says from Robinson Engineer, it should say Robinson Engineering. Further down that same page, under ordinance review committee, the first bullet point for trustee Todd spoke of the emails sent to HR, blah, blah, blah. The third line says agency provided the service and if they were. There's no end there, so I'm not sure were what. So that was a question mark that I feel like it's the end of the sentence is missing, so I ask that the sentence be completed. On the next page, under reports of committees and commissions from the senior advisory council, I ask that it, that we add that will be filed with the certified minutes. On the last page, under item E, for the motion to approve an ordinance for the roll call, we have the nays as trustee Brewer, she in fact voted aye for that, so it should be moved from a nay and that should say none, and she should be added to the ayes for that vote. That's the extent of those changes.
Will you be providing the clerk with a copy of those?
Yes. I told her I would write them up for her.
All right. All right.
And again, not to repeat myself, again, we get copies of after revisions, okay? Everything revisions. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Carter. Any other questions or comments? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Tate?
No.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes. Motion carries. Item B, motion to approve the general proceedings, oh, my apologies. May I have a motion to approve the general proceedings for the regular board meeting of December 11, 2018? May I have a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem, I have seven changes. I would move that we approve this with seven changes.
Will you have to read them all?
On page one, under staff present, it lists interim finance director Judy Sutfin, when in fact she was not present that evening. On page three, under reports of officers, the second bullet point under the mayor's report, Robin Kelly's last name is misspelled, I would ask that we correct that spelling. Under the end of the reports of officers, we don't have the treasurer listed. He in fact was not present that night, but we should still have him listed as the report and being not present. Same thing for reports of departments, the finance department have, should be listed and then she was in fact not present that night. Further down, under reports of departments, same thing with Emma, he was not present that night, but it's not listed there and should be. Further back, two pages later, under unfinished business, on roll call, the nays that's not listed, it should say none. The following page, under new business, item E, where you start out saying trustee Grant and trustee Zupan seconded, at the end of that, you repeat yourself and say trustee Grant moved, seconded by trustee Zupan, I would ask that you strike the second motion, the second part of the motion there. And that's the extent of those seven changes. That's my motion for item E.
All right. And again, you will provide a copy of the copy, correct?
Yep.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So motion by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Carter. Any other questions or comments? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Oh, yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
That's fine.
Trustee Tate?
No.
Motion carries. Item number five, public comment. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor pro temp. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to business of South Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter replies, or rebuttal. Trustee, 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 does he have a question? All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor pro temp. Each question, each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of South Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter replies, or rebuttals. I'll listen to all comments and take notes, but if you have a question, I'll be sure to forward it on to Mayor Burgess and he will respond to you when he can. All right.
Judy Cast here. I would like to let you know that last Thursday I attended a police pension meeting right here and I was able to ask questions. One of the questions I asked the president, who is a police officer here, are the police contract negotiations still going on? He hesitated for a moment and he said, yes, but we have not had a meeting in over two months. Now I'd like to know why we are paying somebody for no meetings. And I'm not making it up and I'm not lying because it's on your accounts payable. I'd like to know why we're paying somebody to do nothing. I said way back that this thing was being milked and I believe it. And if you can every two weeks take that amount of money out of tax dollars, what have you been doing all along? The trustees sitting up there gave their rights to what trustees are supposed to do, to the mayor, to HR, and to the financial director. And now we don't know what's going on. Policemen, where's the water fund money? How much have we got in there? Where is the money that was supposedly put in reserve? If we've got money in reserve, no police officer should have had a screwed up paycheck. And I'm tired of the negativity from the inner circle because we get up here and ask questions. If we don't ask these questions, how are we going to know? I want to know where my tax dollars are going. I want it like it used to be and money was transferred from the water fund to pay payroll, money was transferred from here and give a reason. But the fact of keeping your mouths shut and not telling us anything makes us think very, very negative. And we will continue to do so.
Linda Washington, I want to address a concern that several residents have. I got several phone calls in regard to a posting that's on the South Village webpage where we have a couple of positions posted. One is for a, I believe, a part-time director for the community center for $20,000 and another job listing that's posted on the webpage, I believe, is for an assistant economic development director, reporting to the economic development director for $25,000, which is the total of $45,000 for these two jobs that's listed up on the website. I'm just really curious if we can pay $45,000 to somebody or to two people that you have consolidated two offices to save money. First of all, you all voted or the mayor made a decision to take $8,000 from Mohan to save money. Then you took that money and gave it to, at that time treasurer to add to their $6,000 salary because they thought they needed more money. So they took that $8,000 from Mohan and gave it to the treasurer. Then they turned around and moved the treasurer to become an intern, whatever, making whatever because we don't know what nobody really is making. Now that person is the finance director making everything that Mohan made that's been here through three terms of mayors and master's degrees. They're making the same thing Mohan made with all benefits and now we have other positions. $25,000 for an assistant economic development director, $20,000 for, they never paid Cortez anything. I don't know what they paid Robin, but I would have really liked to know where all this money is coming from since we have no money. I know at one point the clerk asked for a deputy clerk to pay somebody $10 an hour just to help do the filing and all of these minutes to be called up that trustee Beth Zupan have a problem with every single week. So I mean, justifiably, assistant clerk, I know it doesn't matter what we think should be done with our tax dollars that's being paid, but since you're just taking notes, maybe you could take a note to the mayor and let him know that the residents want to know. Why is he making a decision to post jobs for frivolous work when we have people that need real help and you can't pay them a damn? Let's not pay him any attention.
Mary Escovedo, and we all know why I'm here, to talk about social media. Things are still going on. I guess if people don't have a life and they have nothing to do but post on social media and talk about everybody, maybe if you all made him do their job and why would he need an assistant if he doesn't even work? So maybe if he did his job and earned the pay that he's getting, he wouldn't have time to be on social media with Derek's wife and daughter talking about everybody, okay? And secondly, when he said, when he told me he was, he never told me he was on a diet, but I knew he was on a diet because he'd been on a diet from day one since I met him. But I just want you to know that I will be here every week talking about social media and talking about you trustees that are condoning their behavior when you know it's wrong and you all, all of you received an ordinance and should abide by it and none of you are doing your job. And remember that some of you were elected by the residents, some of you were not, and those who were not aren't doing their job anyway, so I'm sure you don't expect to come back. And those of you who are, and also don't forget that there's karma and I think a couple of you have already had some karma and it's still coming. Thank you.
Rachel East Smith. So I wanted to thank the, I know last week I thanked the chief police, but he was not here. I did want to say thank you for what you did with the kids. It was lovely and we really, really appreciated it and the kids loved it. And I thanked you last week, but you weren't here, so I figured you could get the thanks here. And about the assistant economic developer, I think that we've already got one person with a full-time investment in that and to just add another $25,000 on top of what he's already receiving. And I'm not quite sure about the schooling and things like that. I don't know the 100% of all those things, but if there was already trouble with his, with the amount of income he was getting versus how much education he had, why are we going to add another $25,000? So I think that that is just silly if we could add another police officer part-time for that. Thank you.
Code enforcement. Code enforcement.
All right. Thank you for those comments. Like I mentioned earlier, I will forward those on to the mayor and he will respond back to you. So moving on to item number six, reports of officers, the mayor's report. I do not have a written report, so we will move on to the clerk's report. Ms. Marv Campbell Brewer.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I don't have a whole lot tonight, however, I would like to make certain that you have each picked up the little goodies that I have on the table in the back for you. Back there is the 2019 holiday schedule so that you know exactly when Village Hall will be closed. That's this one. Then what people ask for in, Mayor Pro Tem, Grant makes certain that I get it out to you, and that is I've combined the recycling calendar with Republic along with their holidays as well as our dates for regular trash pickup. So you have that to your avail. You also have a copy of all of the committee of the whole meeting set scheduled as well as regular board meeting, meetings as well. Know that the meeting dates can likely be changed depending on the activities of the village and/or whether or not there's actual business to take care of. One thing that I would like to bring to your attention, and that is as I was on social media, because I do get quite a bit from social media, that I find to be very, very productive, but I came across a grant for trees for the village, actual large trees that can be planted in our parkways or large open spaces. It is a grant. It is dependent upon residents volunteering to assist this land organization who would be bringing in their staff and their professionals and a lot of their labor. However, if we have, if we only request 10 trees, that they would come one day during the week, if we request 20 or more, then they will guarantee that they will come and work with us on weekends. It is a grant that has to be applied for. The grant is due by March the 1st. And before expending the time and asking a couple of the directors to assist me with writing the grant, I would just like to know, just with the few people that's here, is that something that you think would be of interest? Can I just see a short hand? Fantastic. Okay, so Kevin, can we work on that? Fantastic. We'll keep you informed. Thanks so much. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, madam clerk. Village engineer, Mr. Jim Zarneck.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Through coordination with the mayor, the public works director, and the finance director, we were able to finalize this year's MFT CDPG roadway improvements program. Program will consist of two improvements. First is resurfacing of 3,400 feet of roadway on 221st Street from Sauk Trail to Orient Avenue. The improvements will also include curb and gutter repairs and construction of wheelchair-accessible sidewalk ramps. The second is rehabilitation of the culvert that crosses 221st Street between Chappelle Avenue and Clyde Avenue. This rehabilitation will consist of lining the culvert with geopolymer mord that is fully structural. This will result in a much shorter construction period with less disturbance to the neighborhood and will be a much more cost-effective solution than replacing the culvert. This program will be paid for with MFT and CDPG funding already dedicated to the village. We are preparing the required MFT resolution and agreement, which will be presented at the first board meeting in February. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Zarneck.
Got a question. Mr. Zarneck, the second item on here, you said the rehab of the 221st Street between Chappelle and Clyde. Is that where we had that big water main break recently? Isn't that where we just had a recent water main break on 221st? And I think so. So it's a different area?
Different project.
No, I know it's a different project, I said, but does this include the 221st Street area where the big water main break is? Does this include the item number two, 221st, between Chappelle and Clyde? These are two different areas, what's all together?
Same street, same project. Water main separate from Sauk Road, culvert and street light.
Okay, so we won't be able to resurface some of that area over there on 221st, so it's not in the plan?
No, it's on, okay.
It's on, okay. Now, oh, okay, man. The area in this memo that you, is 3,400 feet, but I can't seem to get the number of feet for the whole village. I've asked that question before and how much and how many feet have been rehabbed and, you know, changed. So is there any way, and I'm sorry, need to talk to both of you guys, about how many feet needs to be repaired or how many feet has been repaired? And I sent you a memo, you know, requesting that information some time ago. So we'd like to know how many feet is in the village, how much has already been repaired so we can give an idea of, you know, where we've done work before.
Is that it?
I can think of right now.
All right.
But I sent you the memo to you and, you know, I'll send it, resend it to you again so you have everything. Thank you.
All right. Item number seven, reports of departments, finance administration, director Judy Sutfin.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. In the last two-week period, we have closed the books up to November month end. We expect to close out the books for December in We expect to close out the books for December in the next two weeks, bringing us current. Um, I expect to review the financial results compared to budget at the first committee meeting in February. From a high level, we're tracking reasonably well compared to budget, from a revenue and expense perspective. While we do have some pockets where the revenues are not at the budget level, they are still within reason. This is much better than last year, when the village was tracking $1.1 million behind budget in revenues all year. Again, this will be shared at the next committee meeting. Uh, we continue to make strides making our systems and processes more efficient. We have scheduled training on the upgraded version of Civic, um, February 6th, 7th, and 8th, and as well as, uh, 12th, 13th, and 14th. With this will come more efficiency, efficiencies. Uh, while we are still short-staffed, we have a very good team in place, so that we're training and building around their strengths. Currently, we have a full-time billing and accounting position open, that we are searching to fill. Uh, we processed our utility bills earlier this month, with our part-timer filling in. Through this first billing cycle, we gained some insights into this process, and we're adding more structure, more controls, and more transparency. More to come on this front, though, and that concludes my report.
Alright, thank you Ms. Sutcliffe.
I just have a comment, or a question. Um, can I have a copy of your report?
Always.
Okay, and, I did not get my sewer bill, so I'm not sure what is going on, um, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I think we're in a different cycle. Um, I live on the south side, but I think it comes out on the, the north, on the north side. So, I'm not sure if I'm the only one that did not get it. And, also, when it comes to our agent report, and those different reports, I realize, well, I shouldn't say I realize, I got them later today. Is there a way that you can get it to us by Friday, before we even have our meetings? Because there's three reports, the, the three, the cash, I didn't get the cash one.
Right.
But I got the other two. But if we could get them in more in the timely fashion, we used to get them every 15 days, so that we kind of kept track of what was going on.
Right, and, uh, we have been short-staffed, but I will work on that. And we did get out the north side bills, um, earlier this month. South side is not scheduled to go out until, um, the first of February. So, I don't know if you're in a special cycle, because you're sewer-only, and we'll check into that.
I would, yeah, if you could, because it should've, I should've already had it by the first of the year.
Okay, so you, you, even though you're on the south side, do you act like the north side?
Somehow, however it was billed, my understanding is, we are with like the north side. They took this group, and they, and why, I don't know, but I've not received it, so, um-
Let me look into that, and I will get back to you.
Because if I didn't get it, I'm going to assume the rest of the, um-
The sewer-only?
Right, so we want to make sure that they don't get, um, late charges and things like that.
Yeah, that will not, um, happen, but we're talking then about 20 or so individuals then, who are sewer-only.
Correct.
And we will look into that.
Correct, thank you.
Alright, I got a question.
Sure.
Uh, Ms. Sutcliffe, you just indicated we have a training for February 6th, 7th, and 8th, 12th, 13th, and 14th, who's having training?
Um, the, uh, the billing and accounts payable, um, areas, are all having training in general ledger area.
Okay, now, uh, you also mentioned there's a position for billing, and, uh-
Yeah, we had our, um, billing person retire recently, and that's the, the position to fill that one.
Okay, so we're gonna fill that, that doesn't- It, but the second thing is that, uh, I'd like to ask some questions about, uh, last year's, um, not last year, last pay period. Uh, it was my understanding that the police department did not get their full pay. Do, can you, uh, elaborate or tell us anything about what's going on? Because we hear a lot of stuff, so-
Trustee.
Huh?
We will not discuss that right now.
Excuse me, I could discuss what, why won't you? You can't tell me what I cannot, can and cannot discuss? You're not saying-
I believe that's involving personnel and pay, I don't think that should be discussed.
We're talking finance.
I understand.
Okay, we, we're talking finance, and I want to know-
Trustee, I understand.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. We're talking finance, okay? And what I would like to know, is whether or not they got paid, that's finance. That's our job to make sure the money's out there. We're talking finance, I want a yes or no que, uh, yes or no answer. And I don't understand why we can't, uh, know about that, that's what our job is, to watch the money.
I understood, trustee, but we cannot discuss pay of, of employees.
I didn't ask for the specific?
No, I know, I know you asked for a specific amount, but we will not discuss pay, if somebody get paid or not, now, in the open, that's not correct, trustee.
Uh, I, I'd like to, some input from the attorney, we talking finance, whether that finance portion from the lawyer, was it out for, uh, did we get paid the whole thing?
You can ask a question, if the state will pay a roll, or if there's years in general.
I didn't ask for a specific, okay? I'm asking the whole thing, that, are we-
Everything is current.
Everything is current, that's what I'm saying, okay? The second thing is that, uh, but, uh, there's a, um, additional, I want to know if additional funds were paid out to the administrative assistant for four years?
Additional funds as how?
Uh, was anybody paid for four, is anybody being paid for being a four-year clerk?
We have a four-year clerk, um, and that has not changed, so, I'm not sure what the question is.
The question is, when you have a four-year officer, you want to know, that they get paid for being a four-year officer. I understand that the person who has it now, is a administrat, administrative assistant, and additional money, additional, uh, duties of a four-year officer was put onto her. So I'd like to know, was she paid for additional duties?
Trustee, again, we cannot ask or answer questions regarding a person, a personnel's pay. So you're asking, did somebody get paid extra money, once over the salary? We cannot discuss that out here.
I'm asking about the administrative assistant-
I understand that, trustee.
Position, this has nothing to do with the person's salary, I'm asking for the administrative assistant's position.
I understand what you're asking, but you're asking that, that employee get paid extra money for doing four years? We cannot answer that question out here, that's regarding personnel and pay.
Well, let me rephrase this. According to what I know, was the four-year information included in that particular salary? Is that in the budget?
Trustee, we can answer that question.
They, they can't hear you, and I can't hear you either.
She can ask if there's a four-year officer on a line item for that position in the budget?
There is not.
Secondly, uh, our last, uh, last, uh, accounts payable, uh, we were charged, well, we paid out, uh, $355 for, uh, remote starter. I'd like to know who approved that?
Trustee, this meeting is for, I mean, this agenda is for this meeting. You asked about something that happened at last meeting's agenda.
What, what does that have to do with, I'm asking a question. I'm asking about a payment.
It would have been approved by a department head or the mayor, so, one of those, uh, everyone approves every invoice that goes through the process, so it's either approved by a department head or the mayor.
Thank you. Now, the, uh, I just received a copy of the billing and use of statement, and forgive me, because I haven't been able to look over it. But, uh, according to the billing and use of statement, we, uh, we have acquired, uh, like, maybe $2.2 million from the water and sewer fund, okay? We have a balance right now of $582,000. My question is to you, when are we going to get the documents that show the breakdown of what that, uh, was that $1.6 million was used for? It seems like to me, we, residents have paid out $2.2 million on water and sewer, and we don't have $500 left. We understand that we have to pay the salaries and bills and all that sort of stuff, you know? But, it seems like to me, we only have a $582,000, when none of the trustees have transferred any money? So we need to know what's going on with the financing, and I have asked, and I put it in writing, and I asked a couple times, I'd like a detailed breakdown of what's been done with the money, with the water sewer fund.
You, you'll see it on the financial statements, um, that you'll see at the next committee meeting. You'll see exactly what the water and the sewer departments spend, and they spend the money that's associated with this. Everything is accounted for, it's money that's spent, um, treating the water, the people, um, that's spent, and the insurance that we have to have, um, to cover, um, our employees and the activities that they do, it's, it's, everything is in the budget. So nothing is being spent that's outside of the budget, so, once you look at the financial statements, you will be able to see that.
Oh, I, I agree with you, it's being spent, but I want to know what specifically are we being spent on? I'd like a itemized breakdown of the reports that show, well, okay, we spent $5 on the water here. I'd like to know, you know?
You're gonna see that on the financials, and the, and the detailed line items that have always been presented.
When, when did that happen?
The, the ones that are available, that I showed you in the past, that's our income and expense report, that you have seen many times, compared to budget.
You, you showed me a total, I want a detailed picture.
Why don't you just take a look at that one, and then we can talk about if you need any more detail?
All I need is the reports, I'm wondering when are we getting those?
And, I've said now three times, that they're gonna be at the next committee meeting?
Well, you didn't say that since August, we haven't got a report yet.
No, I haven't said it since August, I've said it to you now.
Well, we're not gonna keep it, I said I'm not getting the information that's the-
Trustee, trustee, you're debating, we cannot debate.
Wait a minute, uh, trustee is gonna debate, wait a minute, alright.
We can, we'll not go back and forth.
Okay.
We will not go back and forth and debate.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Keep asking a question, that's fine, ask the question.
Wait a minute, I'm a trustee, I can debate, rebuttal, whatever, you got, you got it all twisted, bro.
Call the meeting's order.
You got it all twisted, bro.
That's fine, that's no problem, asking a question. However, she's going back and forth with her, that's debate, we cannot debate.
Who said we can't debate?
Call the meeting's order.
Uh-uh. You don't have the right to say we can't debate. The trustees are up there to debate, that's what we're here for.
Trustee, bro, you can ask the question, that's fine. She, when you ask her a question, she answers your question back.
Then she can't debate?
No, 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 nobody can debate, not just you, not just her. So we can't go back and forth and debate, if you have a question, you have an answer.
Where is that written? Where is that written?
You will not have the audience disrupting the meeting, we have a meeting going on right now. Please be respectful of the trustees, we are being fair.
You're telling her something, and she's a trustee, and you're not telling a woman.
Wait, first of, excuse me, first of all, Mayor Pro Tem, right now, therefore, she's asking a question, she gave her answer, she's asking again, then going back and forth, that's called debate. That's fine, you can't go back and forth and debate, this is a board meeting, this is not a committee meeting.
She's not, she don't have a talk, let it, she's the trustee. Uh, trustee, uh, Grant, I don't know where you're getting this information from, but that's what trustees are up here for, to debate. Okay, you cannot stifle my, my conversation, you, you cannot, you cannot, uh, deter me from whatever I ta- Wait a minute, I'm talking, so you want to listen to what I got to say? You know, you cannot deter me from what I got to say, I'm a trustee, okay? I can say whatever I want to say, okay? You cannot stop me from talking, I want to make that perfectly clear right now. That debate, and rebuttal, and all that stuff, does not, owns something that the mayor brought up, made up out of his head somewhere. So you cannot stop me from talking, and that's, and that's the way it's supposed to be.
Understood, trustee.
Okay, so, if I want to sit here and ask her another question, I can.
Trustee.
Okay.
Trustee. Trustee, you asked a question, she gave you an answer.
And you interrupted, I might want to go back and, and understand what she's trying to tell me. You, you guys can't just interrupt when people are asking questions.
So did she answer your question, at all, did she answer your question? I'm just asking, did you get your question answered? I'm asking, did she answer your question to, to your liking? Did she ask your question?
Well, yeah, I have to go back and, and reiterate what I'm saying, so I can remember what I'm saying, because you interrupted me.
Do you have any more questions?
Yes, I got some more questions, okay?
Okay.
Alright, then, uh, Ms., uh, um, last week after we talked about the, uh, uh, the 335, uh, oh, you know what, I want to say I'm probably asked first of all, because these are why we're here, trustees to get answers to some questions, and, since we haven't got any reports since forever, and stuff like that, we need to know what's going on with our funds, okay? So I'm hoping you don't take this personally, but that's what I, that's what we were elected to do, find out where the money is, okay? Now, uh, the next, the, uh, only other thing is that, Jim Robinson Engineering indicated last week that we were gonna get, uh, that the mayor was gonna apply for some loans to get 500 fixed, or something like that. However, according to what I know, that we have, should have about $600,000, if I'm not mistaken, left in the sewer account. And I want to know, why are we getting a loan? When we have money out there to fix these things? And it seems like to me, the money's being spent on stuff that shouldn't be spent on. But my thing is that we, why are we getting a loan, when we have the money? According to the reports that I see. So, can somebody ask me, why are we getting loans? One of our problems right here now, is that we're always asking for loans or bonds, or something like that. I want to know, why are we getting, asking for these loans or bonds, when we have money?
Relating to the reason why we're applying, applying for the loan, is, um, it is a magical time with the IEPA, where a community like Sauk Village can apply for a loan for water system improvements, up to $1.5 million, and receive forgiveness for 75%. So, over $1 million of that money, could be offered as a grant to the village. So essentially, it's free money being offered to the village, if the loan is approved. So it's an excellent time to apply, and, um, repayment is a 20-year time period, so you can't ask for a more efficient use of money, for water system improvements.
Well, okay, my only comment is that, is that residents have got $2.3 million in there, the most efficient use is to use money that we already paid out, that's my comment, okay? That's the end of my comment.
Fire Department Captain Dennis Finnewood.
Thank you Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Over the period from January 3rd through January 17th, Fire Department responded 18 calls for service. Our most serious call was a garage fire at 4:30 in the morning, which was quickly extinguished with the help of our neighbors. We currently have three firefighters in the Fire Academy at Perry State College. Upon completion in 14 weeks, provided they pass all their tests, they will be state-certified. This cost was paid through the treatment grant that we received, and no cost to the village. This concludes my report, thank you Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Emergency Management Agency Director Alan Faber. I'm sorry, uh, Police Department Chief Malcolm White.
That's fine, thank you Mayor Pro Tem. President, um, Pro Tem, uh, when we get to the, uh, accounts payable, I know Ms. Sutcliffe generally leaves, can you get her to stay, so we can ask some questions for that?
I believe she will stay for that part.
Thank you very much.
Since, uh, January 9th, uh, between January 9th and the 22nd, which would have been today, the Police Department has responded to 418 calls for service. Uh, we do not have an accurate account of, uh, the full arrest at this time. All that ends my report.
Thank you.
Got a question. Officer Wright, uh, last pay period, uh, there was a thousand dollars paid out to, uh, Linwood for, uh, uh, ballistics, you know, uh, you know, fire range and stuff like that?
Yes ma'am.
Now, it's, my understanding, that this is for two years, okay?
Yes.
Now, my question is to you, and maybe you could answer this, uh, trustee Grant, is that, we, when we do the budget, it's for one year, okay? Now, the, uh, the payment that we made, I understand is for two years. So my question is to you, how are we paying money, $500 for the second year, when we haven't even got it in the budget? I mean, why are we doing that? And also, I would like to know, did we get some kind of written agreement from Linwood? And also, I would like to know, did we get some kind of written agreement from Landwood? You know, you know, talking about this fire range. I know it's, it's a fantastic program, don't get me wrong, but I'd like to know why a trustee's, the last, well, me, rather, the last person to know about it, we spent a two-years' worth of money when we're all supposed to be working in this budget year, you know? And who authorized the payment for this, for the, uh, fire range?
Okay, that, that's a good question. Uh, the purpose of that is, uh, the, the Police Department does not have their own range. And they've never coordinated any efforts to do so. Uh, we had to find somewhere feasible and work under their conditions. Uh, that was an agreement and isn't, it is in writing. And that's the way that they offer their contracts. Uh, and I know that generally speaking, because they had a similar contract to the Hazenhurst Police Department, because they don't have their own range either. Um, the best way to get the deal, uh, to keep it feasible, uh, is to go off of what they're offering, and they were only offering, uh, two-year deals at a thousand dollars. And that gives us a certain amount of, uh, range dates, uh, every year for the next two, two years, where we're locked in, so that we can't be bumped by other police departments.
Okay.
And yes, ma'am, it, it is in writing, yes, ma'am.
That sounds right. Can we get a copy of that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
That's fine.
That's it for that one, yep?
Thank you.
Emergency Management Agency Director Alan Faber.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp and Board of Trustees. Uh, in conjunction with the fire calls that we had, uh, we're also still working with the other EMAs in our local area with the smart organization on upcoming training events that we got coming up for the next year. Uh, in final note, we have some bad weather coming up. Uh, we got some freezing rain and some snow and some high winds coming up. So just be careful out there on the ice. That concludes my report, thank you.
All right, thank you. Public Works, Director Ken Weller.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. Uh, just a few items. Um, we did have a water main break at 221st and Merrill that has been repaired. It's actually on the Merrill side of the street, it's not on 221st. Shouldn't affect any projects at this time. Um, staff was also out at this first big event, snow event this year, which was on the 11th and 12th. Um, first event, first part of the event, we plowed in Center Pass to salt. Next day, we came back and we just cleaned up and did a little light salting. Um, not very bad for that event. Uh, during that event, we did have some older trucks that had some problems, fuel pump in a 2003, some hydraulics in a 90 and 98 plow trucks. Uh, we're currently still working on those trucks from the current storm. Uh, we're all still doing inside jobs right now. This is the time of the year where we had the opportunity to work inside, a little less outside. So we are doing some maintenance in some of the buildings still. Uh, Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, Village Hall. Um, hopefully shortly, we'll be working directly in the Public Works with some of the money that we're hopefully gonna receive. Um, from streetlight complaints, uh, we did several last two weeks ago. We have three more lined up. Uh, this one, the next location is at 217 Street and Merrill. It, during a windstorm, ripped the arm in the light head off the pole. So we have all that lined up to be put back on. Uh, this may actually need a new pole. At this point, we're not for sure until we go up to the top of the pole. The second one is located at 215th and Jeffrey. Unfortunately, that one was shot out, so that light would have to be replaced. Staff also, um, I reported last, uh, two weeks ago about, uh, receiving our, our, uh, parts for air strippers. Uh, we're gonna be doing a cleaning on the air strippers. And in order to do the cleaning, we had to order some gaskets and some parts. Those parts are in. So, uh, weather permitting, we'll start those projects. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Director Weller, can we make sure that the clerk gets a copy of that report?
For sure.
Thank you. Economic Development, Director Joseph Wazawati.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. Um, I provided the board with a copy of the written report. I just wanted to point out, uh, one of the things on here, um, is that we will begin, uh, interviewing for the part-time assistant position, which is actually an old position, uh, which was held by an employee who resigned in, uh, 2018. This position was previously budgeted, uh, by the board and will now assist the department in other various tasks as previously done. And that concludes my verbal report to the board. And again, you did receive copies of the written report.
All right, thank you. Reports of trustees? Can you make sure she gets a copy, please? All right, item number eight, reports of trustees, standing committees, and comments. Public Service Committee, Trustee Bernice Brewer. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, my, uh, public, uh, service, uh, report, uh, again, is not complete because I can't get any information from the mayor, okay? Everybody's saying, I'm gonna bring you that information, but I still haven't got it. Uh, uh, this has been an ongoing saga for this administration since, uh, uh, day one. I don't understand why we can't get information. The information is public information, okay? And, and especially trustees should be able to, uh, access that information whenever necessary. But for some reason, we can't get that information, uh, from, uh, not only the employees here, but from the mayor himself. So again, I want to say that we're asking for this information again. We'd like to know what's going on, especially with our tax dollars. And, uh, that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. Budget and Finance Committee, so my committee did have a chance to meet last Wednesday. And what we did was, we kind of went over a proposal that I created, uh, of what, how I'd like to see the revenue spent that we expect from the gas and wash on 394 on South Trail. Uh, we kind of tweaked it a little bit, so that's something I want to present to the board, probably within the next month or so, just of my, uh, ideas. Then I'd like your ideas as well. If you feel that could be, uh, suited to spend money other places than what I suggested, you know, feel free to beat it up and we can all work together to figure out how we want to spend the money. Uh, that concludes my report.
I'm sorry, if it says gas and wash, what are we doing with the gas and wash?
No, no, so the gas and wash is coming, 394 on South Trail. They're gonna generate money for the village. So I'll put together a proposal of what I want to see the money spent on, such as, just for example, fire hydrants, right? I want to present that to the board. We guys can all have input on what we want to see. And that way, we can give that to the finance director, so that way, we can get those things fixed or done with that expected money that's coming in.
Uh-uh, so you, you anticipate getting some money for like the revenue, sales tax and all that sort of stuff?
Sales tax, property tax, yes.
Oh, okay, right.
Absolutely. All right. Housing and Governmental Relations Committee, Trustee Cecil Tates. Thank you. Orders Review Committee, Trustee Linda Todd.
Thank you, I have no report.
All right, thank you. Public Safety Committee, Trustee Beth Zupan.
I want to let everybody know that we will be meeting next month. We are back to our normal schedule of the first Wednesday of the month, which means that we will be meeting on Wednesday, February 6th. That will be here in the Rotunda at 6:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Community Outreach, Trustee Ron O.P. Carter. Thank you. Item number nine, reports of committees and commissions. Senior Advisory Ca... I don't see Mr. Farmer, so we'll jump to number 10, unfinished business. Update on ordinance number 18 dash 021, disconnection of property for the Village of Crete and it's a property and boundary agreement. Uh, so the boundary agreement needs a few tweaks, and we will bring it back to the board on the February 5th committee meeting, and with a vote to be taken on February 12th at the next board meeting. Any questions on that? All right. Item number 11, new business. I understand a motion to approve accounts payable and disbursements dated January 22nd, 2019, in the amount of $334,276.94. May I have a motion?
Mister, Mister, uh, Mayor, uh, I, uh, requested that these items be removed from the accounts payable for, uh, this pay period, uh, because, uh, for Alicia Strata, for Human Resources person, and also for Hisco, Disco, and O'Donnell, in fact, the Lab Group, have that, uh, removed. And also, um, these things to be voted on separately, uh, for, um... For these, uh, for these invoices. Uh, I don't think these things, uh, especially Lab Group and, uh, uh, Ms. Strata have not been approved by the board. I think they, they should be tapped, uh, the invoices should be, uh, discussed at a later date. And also for, uh, Human Resources, they got new union negotiations on here for $1,700. And as I understand it, she hasn't been doing the new union negotiations, so I'd like to know what she's doing. Also, and for the Lab Group on page two, uh, they charged us $6,000, six, six, $6,301 for, uh, police grievance. Now, we're not having, uh, uh, negotiations, and, uh, the union rep is, uh, is doing the negotiation. I'd like to know, why are we paying all this money? It's, it seems like to me all these things are put on the, uh, agenda, and we don't know what they're for. So I ask that they, these items be removed.
So trustee, before, uh...
Uh, and wait a minute, I'm not finished.
Okay, I thought you...
Jump right in there, I'm not ready. And the last, and the last item I want, uh, discussed is, uh, you know, I think I'll leave that one out, sort of like that.
Okay, so trustee, you jumped in before, it was a motion on the floor. I have to get a motion and a second, and then we can come back to your, your comment, so...
Okay, what, I have something to ask the attorney?
Okay, just let me give a second.
No, wait a minute, before you make your motion, I want to know this link.
Trustee, there's a motion on the floor, so I have to get the motion and then the second, then we can go back to your statement. So trust, motion by trustee Carter, second?
Second.
You have a second by trustee Zupan. Okay, now you can ask your question to the attorney.
Okay, the attorney, these, these items that I requested on here to be removed, we have discussions, I would like discussions and to be voted on separately. Now, it's under, uh, I forget the, it's an Illinois state statute that refers to, uh, all that it does is ask for these things to be removed and voted on separately. Are you familiar with those?
Yes, you, you make a separate motion to give, if you give a line item, or you give the check number, or the warrant number to be removed and voted on separately, it needs to be a second to your motion.
Okay, all right.
Well, first of all, we need to withdraw, uh, the main motion and the second of the original motion.
You might need to say, motion is second. If there's a, a motion to pull out cert guardianship warrants, that's only done, there's a second, yeah, for the roll call vote.
Okay. So, I mean, do I have to, since you said, they could just use this, I'm having to say, the ones I want to move? I don't have to?
List out what you're asking, you pull out the warrant to be voted separately, and there's to be a second to your motion. And then there's to be a roll call vote to approve your motion on second, that they happen, otherwise, all the warrants are offered as a motion.
So, um... Want me to record them separately, ask for them separately?
So, so you'll have to go ahead and make the motion, and that's about me to second that.
Okay, uh, I'd like to make a motion to remove, uh, salaries for, uh, the Human Resources, Human Resources person, uh, dated 1/7 and 1/16, 2019, both in amounts of $1,483.25. Also, would like to remove, uh, $850 at, uh, for January 19th and January 11th for $850, in the amount of $1,700 for Dr. Alicia Strata. Also, I'd like four, that's three, uh, invoices, uh, dated 1/4, 1/2, 1/4, and 1, all three from 1/4, I'm sorry, in the amount of $595 for the Lab Group, because they were never, uh, approved by the board. Secondly, I like, uh... The, uh, last one for, uh, the Lab Group again, is on page two, for $6,301.98 for police grievance, when there's no, uh, uh, Human Resources, uh, project or anything going on, uh, union negotiation going on during this time. So I'd like to know why we're being paid that. So I like those things removed and discussed later, at a later time.
So you want them to be removed from the accounts payable and to be discussed at a later time as well?
Well, they, you can discuss them later, on here.
Do we have a second? All right, say no second, motion fails. Back to the main motion that was on the floor. I have this moved by trustee Carter, second by trustee Zupan. Any questions or comments?
I... No, 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 I can't. I only have a comment, and I want it on record. And I bring this up every accounts payable. And it has to do with the human resource, uh, getting 17.45 hours. Well, this board voted on 17 hours. I know this isn't gonna change, but I'm gonna keep bringing it up, that, um, I want it on record, because this is how we voted, and she's being paid 17.45, and it's disregarded as, as to how we voted. And that's strictly my comment.
My, my comment is that, uh, we have the Lab Group on here, and, uh, we have this group. This attorney firm has never been brought before the board for approval. Again, I agree with, uh, trustee Todd about, we don't really know how much we're supposed to be paying, 17 or 17.45, that it's not, uh, made clear to us. And my, uh, last comment is that, for the Lab Group, if we paying for police grievance and, and we paying, uh, Strata, uh, money for, uh, union negotiation, it seems like to me, uh, somebody's getting double dipped here too. So I would like, uh, that's, that's the end of my comment.
Oh, I only have one more comment. We also received the accounts payable this afternoon. This is unacceptable. This should be in our boxes on Friday so we can review it. Now, even if we had it on Friday, I know Monday we were closed, but when we're receiving it on Tuesday afternoon, that is unacceptable. And this is the second time this has happened. And that's strictly my comment.
There's a, uh, something on the accounts payable for $3,958.64 to the, uh, law firm. This is a settlement agreement, okay? But I want to put this on record too, that this was a settlement agreement that we approved, that our trustees approved this, and it relates to the village's inability to address Fory request. These Fory requests were never, uh, we had to pay all this money, $3,900, because somebody refused to respond to Fory request. That's a little ridiculous, and we wasting our tax dollars for it. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, trustee. Uh, Madam, please call the roll.
I had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't. Go ahead.
I just wanted to add that on page two, under the attorney fees for the grievances and, uh, the other amount, that they were two different amounts that totaled up to the 6,300 amount that you're questioning, trustee Brewer. Um, police grievances are different from contract negotiations. So it's, it's something that the HR person would not be involved with. And secondly, the attendants at Traffic Court, they are our adjudicator, so that's why that is a separate amount. So that, that's my only comment.
What, the response to you, uh, I don't care what it's on there for, they shouldn't have been on there because they haven't been approved, as simple as that. I don't care what we paying them for. They have never been brought to the, to the board for approval.
Okay, trustee, thank you for your comment. Uh, Madam, I think you was calling the roll.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
No.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Mayor Pro Temp Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tates. Trustee Todd.
No.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code MFT funds?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Carter. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee... Trustee Tates. Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Motion carries. Item MC, motion, may I have a motion to approve budget amendments for the department's request for funds in the amount of $251,688.0. May I have a motion? Motion by trustee Zupan, second by trustee... Motion by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Carter, any questions or comments? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
No, I'm sorry, only comment I have is that it's about time we're doing something for the residents here, this, this thing should be, it's about time we're doing something for the residents here, all this money's been spent out, I have no idea where it's at, but at least we could count for this, and I appreciate, we appreciate it.
Madam clerk?
Trustee Carter? Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion carries. With that being said, I will accept the motion for adjournment.
A motion?
Moved by trustee, do I have a second?
Yes.
Moved by trustee Carter, second by trustee Zupan, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.